Platte, Florida to commence at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter as possible. The purpose of this workshop meeting is to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2015-16 budget, second budget workshop. We will now call the meeting to order and have our invocation and pledge the flag by Mr. Suggs.
Father, Father, we come to you tonight in the name of our son and ask that you be with us as decisions are made here today and ask that we use your inspiration and guidance here to help us work through these issues and these concerns and that the work of this council be to thy name and to thy service in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Paul, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
All members are present, that is counted for.
Now, we're now open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comments for good. It's a special group. We'll move on to item two on the agenda, which is presentation and discussion of our proposed general enterprise fund budget for 2015-16, trim calendar requirements. Mr. Reynolds.
All right. Starting off, the first slide is again kind of a refresher from the first budget workshop that we had. Again, all of the funds at this point and all of the figures that you will see after this are based on these assumptions. Again, no cost of living increase included. The increase in health insurance costs, I believe I had 5% at the first budget workshop, it's 9%. When we got our renewal back, it was higher than we expected and we've been able to get it down to 9%. And then, of course, you can see the city share pension contributions for the three different categories of pension funds that we have. We'll start with the enterprise funds and I'll just kind of go as a refresher from the first budget workshop where we basically just did all the enterprise funds. With the airport fund, the only change we've made since the first budget workshop begins, as I mentioned in the CRA budget workshop earlier, we added in a reimbursement to the general fund for administrative services. This is something that, just as a city, we haven't done in the past. We'll take a look at best practices and what other cities do. They all do this type of reimbursement to the general fund because, say, for example, if the airport fund wasn't authority like the gas authority and they hired all of their own people to do their finance, they obviously have their own manager, would have to hire out IP. All of those different costs are being borne right now by the general fund. So, we've added in these reimbursements to the general fund from all of the different funds to, you know, make the true cost of operating those funds more transparent, more accountable. So, in doing that, because as the commission knows, the airport fund at this point in time is not self-sustaining, I had to turn around and just increase the transfer from the general fund back to the airport fund to make up for that. But, the next slide shows the airport fund revenue and expenditures for current budget year, where we're projecting to be at at the end of this year as well as next budget year. And so, we see that the transfer from the general fund next year of about $134,000. This debt service line here, which is $160,000, you'll see that once the debt service is paid off, airport fund should be self-sustaining, even including the administrative expense reimbursement that would be included in there.
When is it scheduled to be paid off?
2022.
Can I ask you another question? I see you don't have any grants stuff. They've been putting some more hangars back that they've gotten grant funds for. And right here, you don't show the grant revenue for it.
It's projected in this fiscal year, they were actually projecting this in that project by September 30th and Jonathan had to go, but I believe that that project, at least all of the work, is going to be completed by the end of September. We may be getting some invoices then after the fact, but I will have to accrue all of that back into the current fiscal year. Next year, there's one potential grant project on the horizon and that's removal of obstructions. We've got, you know, trees and it sounds like it's a pretty extensive project, so we're working on funding sources via the FAA and the DOT now. We just don't have it in the budget yet because we're not sure if it's actually going to happen next fiscal year, if it's going to be more planning and it may go into the public this fiscal year.
So, we just need to blank until we find out. I think they're all planning to do some little grant stuff there because they're having people come in from FFA and Department of Transportation about grants until we can include them after our program when they start up, right?
Right. I don't want to just guess and put a number in the budget. You know, as the grant agreements come forward and the commission approves grant agreements, we can include in the resolution, the budget amendment, we'll add in revenues and expenditures for it then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know we've got an airport board and all, but you know, I think one of the things that we need is to understand what's the goal. I know that we are putting in new hangars, we're putting in new hangars over the years and we're probably putting in new hangars now, but also we've increased the runway and whatnot. We need to understand what's the goal, to get the airport where it's solid, where it's self-sufficient. And I guess one of the things I want to know also is how we're pursuing that goal if we get this one out there. But also, I think that, you know, we've got lots of activity, you know? We're building hangars, we've got runways going, we're getting grants, we've been getting grants now for what we've actually put in, a new tower and all. So, we need to make sure that we understand where we're going, what our goals are, how we're going to get there over a two, five, and 10, 20-year plan.
Strategic plan.
Yeah. Because we need to, I mean, because right now, we know, we projected $100,000 that we're going to go in this year, but we actually put $117,000 in and then we're projecting now to $133,000. And then we're saying in 2007, when the debt service goes away, they're going to be self-sufficient. So, I need to understand, you know, what the plan is to cut this deficit, first of all, in here and now, and then understand what are the plans in 2022 or whatever that number is.
I wanted to say that I sit in that board and I think what we need to do is have a meeting that you all come in so you all can see what's doing. They've got more hangars and more of those hangars, all of them were rented out and they're selling fuel and working towards it. And I think if we had a sit-down meeting with them, they would see where the plans forward to get this stuff straightened out. They didn't realize that we hold that much of the time and it brought to their attention and they are looking at ways to do it. They're looking at bringing more folks in here if they can in the aviation business. And so, they're actively looking at ways of expanding. I asked for us to have the agent that comes in when you do stuff from out of the country and they said that might cost too much, but there are things happening. Cuba is coming back aboard and they want to be sending stuff. It's a mural of things opening up. The Panama Canal stuff is opened up and they're sending businesses. And we're a small airport and not that far away from a national airport. So, I think that if we had city manager to get with John and that we meet the first Wednesday of every month at 12 o'clock, we stay an hour, John's not here, we stay an hour and just let you all know where we are and what we want to do. I've been trying to push for us to do international business and I think until we can pull some of that stuff in there, our runways and things are getting in shape and I think we'll be prepared to do some of that. They've been trying to sell some of their land and get other businesses in the industrial park.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I think that we may be looking at and one thing you should be considering as well, and I was hoping John would be here so that he could actually hear these comments as well, is that maybe we should be looking at an airport authority, giving untie on their hands, giving them the authority to be creative as well. But I think that whatever it takes to get them to be creative and to come up with some goals, to wear a strategic plan, to where they can achieve sustainability of the airport without having to transfer money from the general fund. Because I can't look at one entity and not look at all entities that are bleeding the general fund and that's one that's doing so also.
Mr. Mayor, but it's doing it at almost at $931,000 over the seven years and then if it was six years, it's $798,000. So, keep floating, we're floating it for the next six to seven years and we need really a strategic plan on how we're going to close this gap. We need to do that pretty expedient.
That's something that our airport engineer and airport advisory board and prior city managers, we've looked at some really out-of-the-box type of ideas for additional revenue because the airport right now, we tried to raise fuel prices, we raised fuel prices so we were not the lowest fuel in the region and literally overnight, fuel sales just stopped. So, that's something that we realized early on, you know, after a month or two, that has to be a goal for us, otherwise we don't sell any fuel. And so, it's a fine balance. Building the hangars this year adds some additional revenue. We're fortunate it's 100% grant funded, it's not enough to fund that. We've done things like we timbered, well, we're still trying to do that, but we've cleared timber and sell timber, we got a little bit of money for that. We're trying to sell cleanfield sand. We've got an outparcels out in front of the terminal building, that large lot out there. Our engineer again has drawn up like a small strip mall type thing to try to, there's been a lot of different things that we've looked at doing, we just haven't found anybody, for example, interested in the outparcel. We're still continuing to pursue any business opportunities that may appear out there. We were working with an entity that wanted to build a facility on the south side of the airport over near the old runway and we actually got a grant this year to prepare that land, fence the land, clear it, rub it so that it's completely repaired in anticipation of that person doing that venture and now they've, you know, they've backed out. So, fortunately, if it's a venture that's going to create jobs, we can always go after DEO grants, kind of the same thing that we were doing with the restaurant at the riverfront. So, I know we discussed having our airport engineer come in and do a presentation on everything that we've done because he's already done one for the airport advisory board.
So, I don't necessarily need another presentation.
No, but this is what I need to tell you also. I don't know if you all got to hear it, but Plum Creek is an area that's adjacent to the airport. They have gone and done a big deal in Lake City. And what I'm saying is, we need to start reaching out because there's water and sewer right there at the industrial park for the county that would not be hard to take in and we would have some of that stuff. But if we don't go out and look for some of these things to pull them in. The other thing is, last year, we had a delegation from DOT come in and they sat down with us and we all know we toured them, well, you all weren't here, everybody wasn't here, but they toured the area. They said if we find something that we can bring in here, they will help us put it together. So, it means that we've just got to expand our visions and look for whatever we can put in there. If we can turn that industrial park around and get a few businesses in there, we could probably pay off some of the stuff before time. So, it's great possibilities, starting airport with location and getting a trucking company or somebody in there because we could truck stuff everywhere. It might mean a difference in what went there and what didn't. So, as you go and as you talk to people and find resources, the lady from Plum Creek, I asked her, could we invite her here? I think we need to get her out here and pin them down and say, look, you got just as much property out there at Plum Creek as you got because they swapped some property and gave some to us. We'd like to have some of your business brought here because they do business all over the world.
Well, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at what we're getting for the investment that we're putting in there right now. I mean, I know we just got the wastewater treatment facility approved at 1.5 million. We know what we're going to get from that. And the same thing, we had 26 water main break last year and we know we're going to probably be getting the same number this year. Looking back, we need to be investing on something that's going to get us a return on our investment and I just haven't been seeing that coming from the airport. So, we really need to, we need to do something and we need to do something pretty aggressive.
Aggressive makes dollars.
Aggressive means going out and trying to find the right people or get people in there. Sometimes they don't think we have the stuff that they need until we get them here. We've got to be more aggressive on how we need to grab people. I worry people at there, they come, the ones in the past come for lots because I don't ask them once, I may ask them 20 times and by the time it's over, they finally decide that they might come. And some things have come about because we do that. That has got to be some of our role as being commissioners and we ask our citizens that if they know companies that can be here and put some extra energy into doing it because nobody's just going to come to us because we're a nice little place. We're going to have to do something about it.
Well, I know, GP as well as other corporations, they order parts in, fly parts in every day. They fly them into Jacksonville, drive them here to Platte. And one of the things that I think that we need to, you know, if we got a goal of having a certain sized plane, I guess, to fly into the airport, everybody, every business in the city or in the county or in counties surrounding us needs to understand that they can actually fly into that airport or whatnot. And I don't know what size plane can actually fly in there today, but whatever size planes can fall, can fly in there, we need to understand, we need to communicate that to the local businesses, the local industries around, that flying in parts all the time rather than flying into Jacksonville, fly right here to Key Larkin and they're five minutes, but two minutes away from their destination.
747 is the largest.
Well, I guess it's 737, but they said technically they can land on the runway, but they like to have an extra thousand feet. I think ours is 6,000 and I think 7,000.
Because I guarantee my purchasing, well, different purchasing departments don't understand that they can actually fly parts in at the Key Larkin. They're not communicating that to the business that they're buying parts from.
And they can buy fuel and if they fly in there, buy fuel. But I would like for the commission just to, they have a meeting with the airport advisory board, those people volunteer that time and most of them are really pushing to help us do stuff and some of them are pilots that fly all over the world. And I think if you all could hear where they think we need to be, then I think that we would have a better focus on what we need to do to get there.
One more avenue that, it's only happened once in the state of Florida, but it was because the chairman of the appropriations for the legislature, it was in his district, this airport was, but there were funds earmarked to pay off debt early for that one airport. You were really close when the legislature was going to be chairman of the appropriations, but he took the job at FSU. So, but that's one avenue that, I don't know, maybe we can pursue and.
I think you're absolutely, Mr. Reynolds is absolutely correct. If we could find some political savvy and some political muscle to help us get that debt service offer back, we would be financially sustainable the next day. There's a couple of things I've heard that needs to be addressed and you're absolutely right. It goes back to what we were discussing earlier about the CRA having a plan. And I think anytime we don't have a business plan of a enterprise fund, we're missing the boat. I really believe that. So, I think we need to, once again, challenge those folks that are on our airport board and our airport manager to work on putting some type of business plan to get on what it is they want to see in the next one, three, and five years.
It's already been done.
That's, yes, ma'am, Vice Mayor, that's, I just haven't seen it. And work from there, but also need to tout the fact, like Mr. Reynolds was saying, that we had some of the lowest fuel prices in the region. So, if we can attract businesses so that when we have folks come in here to partake of that business or the services of that business, because if we got low fuels, they're going to come here. I think we need to look at that. The FAA unfortunately will dictate a lot of what we can and can't do, but those are things we can all work within our plan and I think we can do that. But I do think that one of our board members has enough savvy and political out that we could at least broach the subject of getting this debt service, you know, looked at.
But I think this also goes back to what we just heard in the CRA meeting. We've got to invest in economic development for the city and marketing. I mean, it has to be a complete, we've got to start branding this community, but I think before you can brand a community, we got to identify our strengths and weaknesses. We started visioning is the first step, strategic planning is the second step. And until we can actually put that plan together, we're going to continually spend the will. And we've got to put people in place with expertise and sometimes it doesn't come from the people that are employed with the city, it doesn't come from the commission, it's going to come from outside sources that are professionals that do this and they get a real return. But you have to put, there has to be some money put towards it.
One of the things that we've done while we're still on the subject of the airport is we've looked at what the cost would be to put internet connection, internet service out of the airport, not just at the FBO, but also at our hangars and our commercial hangars and our smaller hangars. And I think the cost, Matt, was less than $1,000 or something like that. And so, Brian brought me that request last week and I told Brian if it was no more than $1,000, we need to go ahead and invest that little bit of money so that now those folks that are actually out of the airport can actually advertise their services at the airport via the internet. And, you know, so that was one of the very small things that we could do, you know, to attract more folks out there, but it was something as simple as putting in infrastructure to do the internet, you know? So, all these little things, hopefully we'll start making some return on our investment, but the biggest thing is to see that plan and see if it needs to be updated.
Okay. Next fund is the utility fund. Change is the end since the first budget workshop is, we've added a 10% increase in water and sewer rates. At the first budget workshop, down at the bottom, you see that with no rate increase, the utility fund had a deficit of about $81,000. And so, they have about $300,000 in reserves, so that would have been almost a third of the reserves. So, again, we added a reimbursement to the general fund for administrative services based on the size of revenues in each of those funds, utility fund.